All right, everyone, I'd like to call tonight's council meeting to order. Welcome back, everybody. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hilton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if we could all please remain standing, and Malcolm McPhail will give us the invocation.
Greetings, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight and supporting our city and our city council. I'm the pastor of New Hope Community Church here in town, and I've done a lot of studying and research on church history. And I was looking at a verse of scripture today that it was during the beginnings of the church, and they were establishing government and management systems within the community that they were in and helping out the community, the governance of the community. And there's this one scripture that popped out that kind of caught my attention that I think would be very applicable to us today, to our city council members and mayor. And it says, "Let us pursue what leads to peace, that it might build others up." And I thought, you know, that works in decisions, whether they're on a city council, a national governing council, a church council, or any leadership position. Let us pursue what leads to peace, that it might build up other people. And so I want to challenge our city council tonight and encourage you to consider that. It's kind of the intended or unintended consequences that take place, and that it would lead to peace, and our community would be greater for it. So thank you for letting me be a part of this council tonight and sharing a little bit. Let's bow our heads. Lord, thank you so much for our community, for our city, for our leaders, Lord, our mayor, our city council members, and all the different departments that are represented here tonight. Lord, they make decisions every day that affect people's lives and affect the community in which we live in the short term and in the long term. I pray that they will make decisions that will lead to peace, not division, that lead to peace and bringing people together that we all might be edified in the process. Keep your hand upon our city, keep it safe, may our city be in peace, and may our first responders be safe in all that they do and every facet of protecting our city. We thank you for these things, and we ask them in your name. Amen and amen. Thank you, and God bless you. You may be seated.
Okay. City Clerk's report on posting the agenda, followed by roll call.
The agenda was posted on July 25th at 2:04 in the afternoon. Councilmember Brocko?
Here.
Councilmember Armandiris?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
Mayor Blankley?
Here.
All present.
Okay, under orders of the day, we have none. Employee introductions. Haba, you have a few people to introduce, is that correct?
Our Public Works Director.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council members, we have three team members to introduce tonight, and I will be starting based on their hiring date. I will start with Alex Morales, if you could please join me. Alex Morales joined the Parks and Landscape Team under the supervision of John Sousa on May 13th, 2024. Over the past 11 months, Alex has shown his dedication as a part-time staff member of the street trash collection crew, working hard to keep our city clean. Now he is thrilled to take on his new role and continue to contribute positively to our community. Alex is a devoted father to two beautiful daughters and a loving husband. For the past two years, he and his family have called our great city home. In his spare time, Alex enjoys cooking, spending time with his family, and working on his car. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you. I would just like to say, thank you. If you see me around, I'll be in the Parks, I'm in the Parks Department, just wait on me. Be around.
Thank you. Welcome. And next is Anthony Ornatas.
Sure, whatever you prefer.
Anthony joined the Street Trees Stormwater/Wastewater Team under the supervision of Bill Avila on June 3rd of this year. Anthony brings nearly six years of diverse experience in laboring, landscaping, and general carpentry. He also holds a certificate as an electrician, apprentice, trainee. Whether it's patching potholes, pruning greenery, or tackling underground pipeline repairs, Anthony is ready to handle it all. With his impressive skills and can-do attitude, we are confident that Anthony will contribute to enhancing our streets and stormwater operations. Thank you, Anthony, for sharing your talents, and welcome to the team.
Good afternoon, guys. I just want to say thank you for coming out. I'm excited to be here. I can't wait to see what the future holds for me. And if you see me around, say hi. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, but not least, John Penn. John Penn joined the Water Section under the supervision of Jeff Castro on July 22nd. John brings a wealth of experience from his 10-year tenure as a custodian at Evergreen School District in San Jose. Additionally, he has been contributing part-time to the City of Gilroy Street Section, helping to keep our public spaces clean and safe by removing trash and debris. John lives in Los Banos with his wife and three children, two boys and a girl. In his free time, he enjoys fishing and working on cars. We are excited to have John on the city's team and look forward to the skills and dedication he will bring to our community. Welcome, John.
Hello, I'm John. Just want to thank you for the opportunity and look forward to my career with City of Gilroy.
Welcome and thank you. Okay, next department. Ypaulito, want to introduce yours?
Excellent. Good evening, mayor, city council, and community members. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce two new members to Community Development Department. First, I would like to welcome Khalid Al-Khalidi, who joins our Fire Prevention Team as a hazardous materials inspector one. Khalid holds a bachelor's degree in environmental science and brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to our fire prevention team. He started his career as a compliance inspector for gas stations, making sure they followed local, state, and protected our environment. Khalid has also worked for biotech company as a quality control environmental monitoring analyst and has public sector experience, working in the environmental department with the city of Pleasanton. In those roles, Khalid has gained valuable experience in environmental sampling and monitoring. Outside of work, Khalid enjoys swimming, hiking, and spending time with his family while trying out new foods. We are thrilled to have Khalid on our fire prevention team and look forward to the positive impact he will make on our community.
Thank you, Ypaulito, for the introduction. I want to say thank you all for this opportunity. I'm excited to be here, and I'm looking forward to bringing my services to the City of Gilroy.
Thank you. Welcome.
Next, I would like to introduce our new supervising code enforcement officer, Tony Gonzalez Jr. Tony comes with us with over 28 years of experience in code enforcement and holds a bachelor's degree in administrative justice from the San Jose State University. Tony has worked in supervisory positions with both the City of San Jose and City of Saratoga, where he has become skilled in enforcing municipal codes, zoning ordinances, and building codes. His ability to navigate complex regulations, write ordinances, and lead teams makes him a valuable addition. Tony understands the importance of customer service and effective communication. As a fluent Spanish speaker, he is well-equipped to enhance our outreach efforts within our diverse community. He is dedicated to maintaining high standards of code compliance and educating the public about regulations. Outside of work, Tony enjoys spending quality time with his wife and their 18-year-old triplets, who are about to embark on their college journeys. Exciting, right? He stays active by mountain biking, exercising, and exploring various destinations across the United States. So help me welcome Tony, please.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm looking forward to working with all of you and carry out the city council policy direction to ensure the attainment of service delivery goals, and thank you very much.
Thank you. If all three of those triplets go to Santa Clara University, you only have to pay for two, just so you know. Ceremonial items, we have none. Welcome, all of you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Under council correspondence, we have none. So now we move to item four, which is presentations to the council from the public, public comment on items that are not on the agenda. I want to make sure that anybody wishing to comment on something that is on the agenda, including closed session, please wait until that item on the agenda comes up. This is for items not on the agenda. And I see, how many do you have? Five? Okay. So you'll use the timer for three minutes, Beth. And Beth, why don't you call the names? I butcher them sometimes.
We'll have James Sinner, followed by Anna Mendoza, Guinevieve Corbin, Alan Espinoza, and Alex Larson. James?
Yes, right there.
Good evening, council members. James Sinner, a longtime developer, driven all of the major developments, passed forces through the years, and backed the town on two of the projects.
Is the speaker on?
I'm getting it.
Just a second, that may not be on. And is the timer, okay, you've got the timer now.
Okay, so I appear tonight, I included some information in your council packet. I'm requesting an agenda item at the next council meeting to go over how we're being treated on our greenfield project, the history of the project. Bob Dyer, a longtime real estate broker, put up some money for the entitlement because New Hope Church could not get anyone through the process. They had three prior development teams, all of which were stymied by staff trying to get through the process. We then went through a three-year tentative map approval process, which resulted in a recommendation for denial, no conditions given to the planning commission. When we got to council, we had a plethora of conditions that were designed to kill the project. Marie and I, excuse me, Mayor Blankley and I, went off and did a little side thing with staff to get rid of most of them, and then we got the map approved. Then COVID hit, Mr. Dyer passed away, and so I came back with the intent of building a senior housing project on it, using the ADU laws or six-bed care facilities. We submitted a building permit for one permit on this project, and we got back this, a violation notice, a certified letter alleging that we cannot build one house, that we had to pay all of our fees upfront, and basically trying to kill the project. I detailed that. I then gave a response letter requesting a hearing and copied that to HCD. No response, but I did get a phone call from Ypaulito, basically saying, hey, we understand what you're doing now, we're going to cooperate, we're going to process your permit, okay? That's the solution I'm looking for, I don't need to escalate it to Jimmy or anything, so we just move forward. When I got to December, when they're going to issue me the permit, they handed me an invoice for $132,000, and they charged me for two single-family detached homes on their impact fees. I tried to appeal that, I got no response from staff, I decided I'd just go ahead and pay it. So I paid the money, we moved forward, and now I'm here to try to get that back. It's completely ridiculous to try to charge me for two full, single-family detached homes. I outlined that in the packet, and so I'm looking for an agenda item on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the clock going up instead of down?
I've got it working now.
Okay. But did he get three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't tell, I'm sorry.
Our next speaker is Anna Mendoza, to be followed by Guinevieve Corbin.
Hi, good evening, council members. So I'm here today to speak on behalf of my child. My child, Hazel Quintero, was in a meeting with the mayor not so long ago, where she was told that our mayor was glad that being an immigrant, she never had to deal with working with the dirt or anything, right? My daughter, being an FFA president, took it very to the heart. She comes from immigrant parents, they work the dirt, that actually work the dirt to bring those beautiful salads you have at the restaurants, to feed your families at home. And the reason I'm here today is, we have to represent every single person in Gilroy. Every single person in Gilroy deserves a better living, a good house, not only the West Side. I invite you, council members, each one of you, including our mayor, come please visit the houses at Rogers Lane. Come and see how people live on those buildings that are falling apart. They need, you know, remodeling. They need to live without roaches, rats, where your, our kids, the immigrant community, the farmworkers community, that's where we live. We ask you to please come and see us. Take a day out of your time and come and visit our fridges to see how they look. When we work under the sun, and we want a mayor that really represents us.
Our next speaker is Genevieve Corbin, followed by Alan Espinoza.
Hi, folks. This is my first time here, so I'm a little bit nervous. I'm here because I live at Monterey Gate. Sorry, I'm also emotional. I live at Monterey Gateway Apartments up here on Monterey Road. I'm here because it's dangerous. We have asked for, the last four years, a bus stop and a crosswalk. It's four lanes of traffic, and we've already had one person killed trying to cross. There are 75 units, some of them double occupancy, some of them single occupancy, but we're all senior citizens. I'm tired of being treated like a second-class citizen. I have the same rights, I have the same needs, I have the same wants and yearns that every single one of you and everyone here have. I would like to know, I read an article of the end of last year that was from the city council in a bulletin that comes through, that I get from Gilroy, that said that there was a bus stop authorized and there was a crosswalk authorized. They had done absolutely nothing about it. There's no sign of any working, there's no, you know, it's like, excuse me. Then I got told recently that they're studying the installation of a crosswalk. Come on, folks, how much trouble is it to paint a line and put a light up? They're all down Monterey Highway in the middle of town. It's wrong to treat us any differently than anybody else. There's a new apartment building supposed to be going in. Are you going to wait until those people move in to do anything about it? It's wrong. It's totally wrong. So I would like to know if somebody could tell me what they're studying and why hasn't it gone forward after it was already publicized by you guys that it had been approved? And there's, like I said, there's 75 units there. If that's not enough, then I don't know what is. You want 75 bodies on the road? So that's, I mean, I can't say too much more because I'll just start crying again.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Alan Espinoza, to be followed by Alex Larson.
Well, it looks like Tony snuck out on us, on me here, but I'd like to thank the mayor and city council members that have helped me out in the past for some of the same situations, Mr. Klein, Ms. Marquez, also Jimmy Forbes. But I'm here to talk about the Garlic Farm RV Park over here. There was certain things that they were not in compliance of, and I brought that to the city council attention, and you guys sent them a letter saying they need to be in compliance by February, this was this last February. Some of us residents that purchased these tiny homes from them do not know where we stand in that compliance issue. Are they in compliance? We don't know everything, we're finding out what we don't know as we go along. But I'm here with some of the other ones that do live here, that live there as well. So we just like to find out, you know, are they in compliance? Did they get an extension for this compliance? We don't know. They don't tell us anything. The actual owner of the place tells us to go jump in the lake. He does not care. He shut down one of their other facilities in Redwood City. When the residents there took them to court and they lost, they ended up shutting down the whole place and kicking everybody out, okay? So this owner does not care. We're there, we had to sign the lease for 10 years. You buy a tiny house over there, 10 years, okay? So what can you do to us? I mean, can you kick us out? You know, are they in compliance? What's going on? That being stated, my other complaint is, I live literally 52 and a half feet away from, Jack in the Box has a big camera and voice, amplified voice deal out there. I know they have a lot of crime over there, okay, not my real big problem, but when they put this thing out there at 2:00 in the morning, at 4:00 in the morning, at 9:00 o'clock at night, especially when we have our windows open now and it's hot, and it blasts out, you are going to be, the police are going to be called if you don't leave here, blah, blah, blah. You know, this thing is on an amplify thing. Do they have, you know, what I've been told by the city council members, call the police, call the police. Police are called, and that's all they can do. Contact people from Jack in the Box. I went over there before, I'm talking to you. Hey, can you guys please at least turn the thing down? No, no, no. So, you know, maybe something to Jimmy Forbes. One of your guys contacted me from code enforcement. I wanted to talk to Tony, but he snuck out, you know, to, oh, he's still here, okay. So I got my contact information here, but that's where we stand. I thank you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker is Alex Larson.
I'll have to find out. It's up there.
Can I make a comment? We need translation. We have a device.
Beth, are we going to be able to put it on that screen as well?
I'll check with Bryce.
Hello, my name is Alex Larson, I'm a fourth-generation Gilroyan, and I've been told that I can't put anything up on the walls, but I wanted to show everybody where y'all live. So we've got Tom lives here.
I'm sorry, Beth, the timer needs to be running. Sorry.
Tom lives here, Zach lives here, Fred lives here, Carol lives here. We've got Neon, Octo Country, and Rebecca, just a little ways away. There. Right here, the Willow Glen of Gilroy is pretty much covered by city council people. Everybody else is not. City council members, on behalf of myself and all the citizens of Gilroy, you're officially on notice that Gilroy is decades behind in being in compliance with California Voting Rights Act of 2001. Mayor Blankley, city council members, you must adopt a by-district election system and move away from an at-large voting system before a lawsuit is filed under the California Voting Rights Act, which compels the city to do so. The consequence of at-large voting is that people are less likely to vote in some of Gilroy's marginalized neighborhoods, which only deprives engagement and for underrepresentation of our communities. Please place an action item, district voting, on future agenda no later than August 19th to give staff direction and to begin a request for proposal from geographic information system analysts. This should be roughly ready to go to vote by the end of October. A GIS analyst will use the latest 2020 census to draft district maps. A public hearing shall be scheduled so that your constituents can attend and suggest improvements. Therefore, you must adopt an ordinance requiring district elections, except one of the proposed maps, or may require further scheduled public hearings wherein your constituents can continue to suggest improvements. Voters within the specific district lines will have the ability to select a candidate from their neighborhood rather than the current representation, which is right here and right here. The rest of you don't count. Part of this civil rights voting act was to make sure that a place like Gilroy is approximately 70% brown, not all Mexican, not all black, not all Asian, 70% brown. This does not reflect it. The economic side of this is not reflected because our city council members are not from the different areas that need to be represented. And so I humbly ask of you to please consider this and act upon it immediately.
Thank you. Okay. We're not supposed to clap, I'm sorry, we will be discussing, part of our agenda tonight is going to be on conduct. So I think everybody here is not, most people here are not new to council chambers, so please, this is supposed to be a safe space for everybody who has all kinds of opinions, and clapping can intimidate those who have a differing opinion. So please. Okay, we have two more speakers, right? Marty Estrada and a?
Zachariah Delarosa.
Zachariah, okay?
Good evening, everybody, council. Just a couple comments I want to make to keep in your memories for the end of this year, that we need affordable housing here in Gilroy, number one. There's a pride, there's a need, the public's interest is not being heard, they want affordable housing. Secondly, we have asked this council for building a youth center. We still want to put that on the ballot this year, and we want to put a bond on top of that for 30 million, so that way we can get this built as soon as possible. Our youth are demanding that, the families are demanding that, and we need access to a youth center. It's very important that we build a youth center here in Gilroy. And also, I want to bring to your attention the housing that the senior brought up, it's a fact, there's no sidewalk there, there's a problem there. Please look at that, look at if there's a way they can fix that road and whatnot. But you know, I was looking at the housing element from the city, and I noticed some things that troubled me. As you submitted your plan to the HDC or HCD, I noticed you put markers, I don't know if it's fluff, but you put areas that you're going to build from the city that you don't own that property. Those properties are not owned by the city. I don't know why that's done that way, but there's line items that you guys put, and you submitted that in writing. So in the housing element, you know, it's a long process, right? So I don't know where we're at with that in terms of, are you really going to build in Gilroy? Are you really going to build affordable housing? It's really important to think about that. We want to scale up and grow the city, and also affordable housing is key to that. Also, transportation, there's a transportation gap here in Gilroy with VTA that we need to get fixed. The county's willing to support, you know, the city council here with, right here, Alexander VIII, there's a plot of land that we can build there, affordable housing, I think that's pinned for you guys to do that, but we need more support. So I want to flip back again, we need affordable housing. Lastly, I want to talk about homelessness. Let's really get together and figure out the system that we need in Gilroy. We need to fix it. We're not, there's a gentleman here by the name of Daniel who's homeless, he's been homeless for years. Chief, I know who, I think you know who he is, Daniel. We need to get him help. He's on the street, he's being treated worse than an animal. I'd like to work with you to get him help, get him support, get him in a hospital, but he can't be out there day in and day out in this heat, just suffering. Nobody's doing nothing about it, he's been there forever. And I want to see what we can do together to give this gentleman some help. But our concern is also, across the board, the homeless situation. Why don't we get a consortium together and work together with all the nonprofits, and let's think about some ways we can make the difference in our community? Thank you.
Thank you. And last speaker, Zachariah.
Firstly, I want to thank God for another beautiful day of life that was not promised, waking us all up today, and I want to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity to speak. Madam Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Zachariah Aaron Delarosa, and I'm 25 years old, and I've lived in Gilroy all of my life. I'm here today because there is a crisis that has impacted our beloved city that's unlike any other. It's bigger than crime rates, stronger than physical disease, growing faster than discord. I'm speaking of our city's homelessness. The two largest problems facing the homeless community is the cost of living and drug addiction. Firstly, California's Firstly, California is one of the most expensive states to live in. Gilroy is 25% above the national average. And it's estimated in order to rent a two-bedroom apartment for a family of four, you need to be making $72,000 annually. Food, transportation, housing, and healthcare costs are all less affordable than the US average. Secondly, drug addiction is prevalent. Nobody is born an addict. Most of these individuals come from backgrounds where that's all that they had around them growing up. In single-parent homes, facing extreme poverty with a shoestring budget, one emergency bill away, and the risk of not making rent is a reality, some just give up hope and want to numb themselves. At first, it's a quick escape, then it's formed into an itch and a habit. Not all, but most of them dig themselves into a deep hole that they can't climb out of alone. They need help, counseling, professionals in the field with compassionate and empathetic hearts, funded to guide these people to a better way of life. Imagine your child lost out there, not knowing if anyone's coming to help them or if anybody cares. I love the city of Gilroy. These are my people, from Santa Teresa to the Creeks. They aren't pieces of garbage to be solely pushed away. They are living, breathing souls. Everyone has a name and everyone matters. We all need to ask ourselves, especially those in seats of influence, what more can be done, not just to combat this problem, but prevail against it? For one, money used in the five-year plan needs to be allocated properly. We need our yes to be yes and our no to be no. The nonprofit organizations such as the Pit Stop have made $130,000 in 2023 from fundraisers and grants. And the Compassion Center has over $2.8 million respectively. And little to nothing has been done to permanently cease this crisis. Plans for an allotment of land near Leaveslee Monroe Ray Street to be purchased and turned into affordable housing are nothing more than whispers, like anything in life. If you want, if you want change, you need to take action. The city of Gilroy has been given over $3.3 million during this five-year plan, and $500,000 was donated to the Compassion Center, while the rest was spent who knows where. The Holy Bible says in Mark, Chapter 12, verse 30 and 31, "And thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, and with all thy soul, and with all thy mind, and with all thy strength." This is the first commandment. And the second is like, "Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself." There is none other commandment greater than these. They need tangible evidence that someone has seen them and doing something about their situation. We don't need more Starbucks. We need more land with affordable trailers that citizens with SSI and general assistance can actually live on. We don't need more volunteers for summer street festivals. We need more volunteers distributing home-cooked meals to their fellow men and women. We don't need another year of 19 individuals on the streets dying from the sheer cold, untreated illnesses, overdoses, and suicide.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up, but thank you.
We need hope, people of Gilroy. I urge you.
Your, your time is up. It's just, it's something to be fair to all. Everybody has the same amount of time, but thank you very much. So with that, we move on to item five, which is reports, closing public hearing, right?
Correct.
Okay. Item five is reports of council members. Council member Bracco?
Nothin' report.
Council member Armandares?
Sure. A brief report from the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency. Our meeting in July was canceled, but back in June, we approved a, after an evaluation of the executive director, a 5% increase to his salary was improved, I'm sorry, was approved. The Santa Clara Valley Habitat Plan permits, project permits, were, have seen a decline from an average of 270 acres a month to 100 acres of impacted land per month. Let's see, we acquired the O'Connell Ranch, another portion of it, from the Conservation Fund, who bought it and then sold it back to us. So now we're the 100% owners and are selling a parcel of that, that includes the home, for 1.2 million, in case anybody's looking. And some good news is that a black bear, a protected California black bear, was seen on Pacheco Pass. And evidence was found of more black bears on the Pacheco Pass, on Pacheco Pass in that area. So some good news. Yeah, a little scary, but also good news.
All right. Council member Marks?
Yes. Gilroy Gardens is offering carnival nights on six consecutive Friday nights beginning August 16th and running until the end of September. The park will be open from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. Premium passholders will get in free. Gilroy citizens will pay only $10 and all others will pay 20. There will be a magician act at the amphitheater and carnival games and food at the event center. It is important for the citizens of Gilroy to visit the park on these nights to encourage Gilroy Gardens to open up on more summer nights next year if management sees this as being profitable for the park. Come on out and enjoy the fun. Please remember that no child will go without a free ticket to Gilroy Gardens if the child participates in the Gilroy Reads program. Students can earn a free ticket to the gardens by reading books. Get all the information at our local public library and check out a book while you are there. Another meeting I went to was on June 21st. I'm the delegate for the city of Gilroy, and I attended the General Assembly Meeting of ABAG, Association of Bay Area Government. ABAG represents nine Bay Area counties with a delegate from each city in these counties. As a delegate, I believed that the delegates would have a seat at the table and be reviewing policy recommendations from the ABAG Executive Board and the General Assembly, would review the bylaws of the ABAG Association. This was not the case. It astounded me that almost 50% of the delegates did not attend this General Assembly meeting. The meeting was delayed until there was a quorum for the county delegation and the city town delegation. The president gave an opening address, which included a statement about the combining of ABAG and MTC, which is the Metropolitan Transit Commission. A report was given that this combined commission now had an unfunded pension liability, which means each city could see a 10% increase in their ABAG dues to help offset the CalPERS liability. The new budget was introduced and approved by both delegations. A quick comment was made about the Plan Bay Area 2050 Board, which seems to address larger cities' issues and not the smaller rural communities like Gilroy and Morgan Hill. This board is made up of a small group of people from ABAG and MTC, with San Francisco being heavily weighted in participants. Throughout the meeting, numerous delegates stated issues that their cities had, which was met with loud agreement. Local control was stressed, the lack of money cities have to build affordable housing, lack of water, and aging infrastructure. A building contractor stood up and stated how prevailing wage is causing housing to not be built due to the high cost. Many, many cities complained how ABAG and HCD, Housing and Community Development, were not listening to the frustrations of the cities on their impossible RENA numbers for this new cycle. The president admitted that many cities requested their RENA numbers be reviewed and lowered to a realistic number. However, all those requests have been denied. HCD is not taking into consideration any of these cities' issues. Many cities were concerned about where the money is coming from for SB 7, which states by 2030, cities have to build housing for their cities homeless. The majority of the General Assembly were in favor of RENA reform. ABAG's mission statement states it is to strengthen cooperation and collaboration across local governments to build healthier, stronger communities. From what I took away that day was the majority voice is not being heard and not being allowed to collaborate. We do not have a seat at the table, but just a chair in an open room. Thank you.
Council member Hilton?
Thank you. Thirteen communities in Santa Clara County formed this joint powers agency named Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority, a local nonprofit public agency that runs a community-owned agency. For these communities, SBC is your official electric provider and the Board of Directors, which is made up of elected from each of the 13 communities. We work in partnership with PG&E. We buy clean electricity directly from the source, encouraging the kind of market growth and competition that results in more renewable energy and lower energy generation rates. PG&E continues to deliver electricity over existing infrastructure, maintain power lines, and provide customer service. Your bill continues to come from PG&E with SBC's lower generation charges replacing those from PG&E. The 4% rate discount further supports our community's goals of reducing carbon emissions by burning gas in homes and supports customers on their electrification journey. To provide financial incentives and opportunities for electrification for, to renters in the SBC service area, the board allocated $12 million towards the multifamily direct install program. The program is intended to provide very low or no, no-cost electrification of qualifying multifamily buildings as a way of bringing electric retrofit to customers who would otherwise don't have access. Built into the program are tenant protections referred to as rent evictions. Gilroy has the largest number of 100% deed-restricted low-income units at 1,770 in SBC's affordable housing stock. There are many projects, five-plus units, that could benefit from converting their oil-gas wall heaters to a heat pump unit that can provide air conditioning in extreme heat. My office has been working with SBC consultants and local community-based organizations in getting some of this funding for our residents. Thank you.
Council member Klein?
Okay. Visit Gilroy is developing a new logo and brand to coincide with Gilroy's growth and vitality. In addition, Visit Gilroy has hired a nationally-recognized company to build an entirely new website that will implement the latest technologies and best practices to motivate tourism. Visit Gilroy has a ride-share program where if you request an Uber, within 20 minutes, or 20 miles of downtown Gilroy, you will receive a $10 off a ride to downtown Gilroy. So far, this has resulted in 110 rides to downtown Gilroy. The goals are to stimulate downtown visits, elevate any real or perceived parking concerns, familiarize the public with the ease of ride-sharing, and discourage drinking and driving. The city of Gilroy has shared the program on this, in their newsletter, social media, and billing inserts, and Visit Gilroy is a grateful partner for this. Visit Gilroy is working with the city historian Toby Escherberry to highlight aspects of regional importance in which Gilroy has played a prominent role. The article written by Toby, "The Many Roads to Gilroy: A Historical Journey Through Gilroy's Past", is now live on Visit Gilroy's blog. The blog post, this blog post not only shines a light on Gilroy's regional importance, but celebrates culture and diversity. The city of Gilroy, the Chamber of Commerce, and Visit Gilroy all contributed funds to an outreach program in the San Jose Mercury News featuring the new craft beer scene, the Gilroy premium outlets, the wineries, and next will be the things to do in Gilroy Gardens. The goal is to motivate more visitors from San Jose area to Gilroy. We can also add, a recent influencer hired by Visit Gilroy to promote the downtown has garnered over 330,000 views, 6,600 likes, and almost 10,000 shares. Thank you.
Council member Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I want to commend our fire department and all first responders who battled the huge fire that we had this weekend. So hopefully, everybody's safe. They did a great job in protecting our land. I want to acknowledge, and he asked me not to mention his name, but recently, I was coming back from Chicago and midair, we had a passenger who was unconscious. And one of our local first responders flew into action and saved the woman's life. So I want to commend him for that, for doing that as well. And then finally, I want to thank all the parents and schoolteachers who brought over kids to come visit me at my office at Santa Clara University in hopes of furthering their education. So I look forward to seeing them become a pro one day. That's it.
Okay. I want to let everyone know that at our next council meeting on August 5th, we will hear a report from Caltrans on the launch of their electric trains. Not that they will be coming to Gilroy and Morgan Hill, but we will hear what the plan is for Gilroy and Morgan Hill. And a reminder that the 10125 interchange construction is coming. That is going to start this year. And that we are working hard on securing funding for the sanitary extension so that that Phase 2 can happen right away after Phase 1. All right. Consent calendar. I will start with asking if anyone wants to pull anything from consent?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull 6.8.
Okay. 6.8 is being pulled.
Please approve.
Well, we need to get public comment first. So I'll ask for public comment on everything except 6.8, if we have any. Okay, then closing public comment on those. And now, council member Tovar? All right. Move approval on all but 6.8. Is there a second? Seconded by council member Klein. Do you need to do a roll call vote?
Council member Bracco?
Yes.
Council member Armandares?
Yes.
Council member Marks?
Yes.
Council member Hilton?
Aye.
Council member Klein?
Yes.
Council member Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes. All right. That passes unanimously. That brings us to 6.8. Council member Marks, do you want to start this off?
Sure. Could we have someone, I don't know if it'd be Jimmy or someone from community development that would answer, just, it's really a clarification question that I have. I noticed that we received $335,000 on a VTA grant. But then, inside the staff report, it talked about an additional $400,000. And that's, so it, so this $400,000 is in addition to the 335, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And I don't anticipate that we would come near to spending that amount. But we would release an RFP later this year and we would get a bid on what the additional environmental analysis would require and that, what that cost would be. The grant, Caltrans does not pay for CEQA-related work. And so that $400,000 would help pay for that CEQA-related work.
Do you, how close to the $400,000 can you imagine it coming to?
I, I don't have any, I don't, I don't have an estimate for you.
I guess what's bothering me is that this came in December on a consent calendar where we gave permission to apply for the grant. But none of us had any idea at that time that it was going to cost us more money out of, you know, the general fund. Now, let's just say it's $400,000. So this is going to be $735,000 for the vehicle miles traveled. When you come back to us, are we going to have a report of what you are suggesting? I mean, I see, I'm very unclear on what this whole process is going to be like. And I'm having a hard time approving this extra money.
I'll address the initial $400,000 question, Cindy, if you could handle the second part. The $400,000 was the amount the council approved in the budget for this project. So that was not anticipating how much we would get in a grant. So that money certainly will be much smaller than that. But we don't know exactly until we get into the process and know how much CEQA work we have to do. But that was approved by council as part of the budget.
Okay. I guess the problem that I'm struggling with is that, you know, we're a working community and a lot of people, you know, they travel on the roadways. And vehicle miles traveled, in my mind, unless I'm totally off-base here, is a tax that would be charged to, to the citizen. And I just have a really hard time with that when everything is so expensive right now. And, I mean, am I on the right track? I mean, at the end of this report, is it going to deal with increased taxes to our citizens?
There, there is a narrative out there that really confuses VMT with VMT tax. VMT is vehicle miles traveled, which is a new standard in which the state requires cities to, to understand the amount of impact a project has on its community. Vehicle miles taxed is a way that states are changing from charging you gas taxes to vehicle miles traveled. They don't necessarily have to be attached. They could be, if that's a policy that, you know, a government would want to do, but California's not that far along in that, in that sense. So they're not really related.
Okay. So then if you find out that a housing project, though, is going to increase our vehicle miles traveled when we need housing, what happens? I mean, we can't turn to the housing project and say, no, we're not going to do it, even though it might be increasing a lot of the traffic.
So the, what would come out of this policy is basically a menu of options that the developer can choose from to minimize the vehicle miles traveled. So, you know, it could be improved pedestrian infrastructure with the idea that people that will walk to the transit center and they won't be in their cars. So they're gonna have, we intend to have a menu of options that developers can choose from.
Okay. So they would be the ones bearing the burden?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Cindy.
I'm going to piggyback on her, on her stuff, too. And this, this particular agenda item is to accept the grant funds, right?
Correct.
But also authorize the $400,000?
Yeah, yes, yes. But I mean, it's to ex...
So the...
No, the 400 is already authorized, right.
Oh, it's already author...
Yeah, that was already authorized when we passed it. This is just the additional grant money, the 300, 350.
Correct. Yes. Caltrans requires a resolution, basically accepting the money.
Exactly. That's what this is, even though I completely appreciate you looking ahead.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Dionne and myself.
Okay. Council member Bracco?
Yeah. What, what's the end goal here?[1724.18]
Yeah, what, what's the end goal here? Are you, are you sharing this with the state so they can use it for whatever they're planning to use it?
So the end, yes, sir. Go ahead.
And, you know, you said to charge the developer. At what point do you stop because they just can't pay it anymore? That is why housing is unaffordable in the Bay Area is because we keep just loading on all these fees on the developers.
So one thing, I understand your point. One thing that this program intends to do is, right now, our standards are based on the state standard, and the state standard just doesn't work for Gilroy because of our demographic, because of our proximity, you know, we're away from the job centers, we don't have great transit here. And so this program will look at ways that work for Gilroy and not, you know, be confined to what the state requires.
Okay.
Councilmember Armandaris?
So this is a requirement, right, so that we can get to a climate action plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is also, and that's also required?
Yes, it'll be part of the program.
And we don't have a climate action plan, is that true?
That's correct.
Since 2012?
We, so we, we did, we've never had a climate action plan. What the council did is, back in, started, I think, in 2012, we developed guidelines. At that time, we didn't have the funds to pay for the environmental analysis, which is why the climate action plan was never actually adopted. And so now, we anticipated that we would need the funding to pay for the environmental to make sure that we can adopt the climate action plan.
Right, which are required.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, thank you.
Also, to add a little bit, the, we, we used to measure traffic impacts in CEQA documents using level of service, ABC, and so on. And about six years ago, the state said, moving forward, you're not supposed to do it. You're supposed to measure by reductions in total vehicle miles traveled. So the idea of developing the, the overall policy is that then we have a framework and a menu of options that can be applied to any project that comes in, so that each project doesn't have to kind of reinvent the wheel and do the same analysis over and over again. And so the ultimate goal is to actually streamline analysis and make it cheaper by having one policy and the way that the state requires us to do it, which we then can apply to any project that comes in.
And there's incentives, right, for being close to tra, close to transportation, public transportation, things like that, right?
It's all designed to reduce vehicle miles traveled ultimately.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then looking for a motion to approve 6.8.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Armandaris and seconded by Councilmember Tovar.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Okay, we move on to item 7, bids and proposals. Approve the purchase of three public works vehicles with the details described on the agenda in the combined amount of $776,679, plus a contingency in the amount of $23,300, for a total of $799,979, and adopt a resolution amending the 2024-2025 budget. Go ahead, Leanne.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the Gilroy community. This item tonight is the purchase of three vehicles for our public works department. During the budget process for our fiscal year '24 and '25 budget, the council approved the replacement of three public works utility trucks in fiscal year '24, sorry, three public works utility action '24 and one utility truck in '25. After meeting with staff to go over their specific work needs and reviewing our funding, we've actually reduced it to three vehicles that we're looking to replace at this time. As you can see up on the screen, we're purchasing a 2024 Ford S750 with a 50, 5, 5.5-ton hydraulic telescoping train generator and compressor, a 2024 Ford F750 utility truck with a generator and a compressor, and a 2024 Ford F750 dump truck. So staff completed the cooperative bid process as authorized by the city of Gilroy's purchasing policy, and based on the Sourcewell quotes that we received, staff is recommending awarding the bid to PB Loader Corporation, as this is Sourcewell's lowest-recognized competitive bidder for these three vehicle replacements. These are vehicles that help our public works department maintain our critical water and wastewater systems. These are specialty vehicles that are built up onto a chassis, and there's not any local vendors that we could utilize for these vehicles of this nature. So we look to the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program to get the most competitive price for these vehicles, because they are expensive. The first one is the Ford F750 with a telescoping crane, and this is what the vehicle will look like. And it's got a compressor and a generator. It eliminates the need to tow a separate compressor for using jackhammers. It's got a higher-capacity 5.5-ton crane, allow for moving trench plates and other heavy equipment. It's got extra storage space for storing oxyacetylene tanks and cutting torches, jackhammers, many other tools and equipment and supplies for the repairs. And this replaces a 2006 vehicle that is no longer a good vehicle for, a safe vehicle for us to be using. The next one is a Ford F750 utility truck, also has an integrated compressor and generator, eliminates the need to tow, oh, did I not, tow separate compressor for using jackhammers, it allows for storage of tools, shoring, lateral camera, PPE traffic control signs and devices, and most all the equipment that is needed by the crew for sewer main and lateral line repairs. And it eliminates extra trips and improves efficiency for the crews working on our wastewater system. And the last is a dump truck, 10-foot bed, 33,000 pounds of gross vehicle weight rating, used for water leak repairs and steel service line replacements, used to haul spoils to the landfill, concrete and asphalt to our recycler. So these are the vehicles that were, that we budgeted for. We've done the research, we've identified the vehicles, and now we're moving forward with the purchase. Going to the latter part of the report, the cost for these three vehicles is $776,679. There's a contingency of $23,300 or about 3% for any additional model and commodity surcharges or modifications as we're going through the build-out of these vehicles. So the total maximum funding would be $799,979. And this is split across two fiscal years, and the money is included in the fiscal year '24 and '25 budget. I have Walter Dunkel from Facilities and Fleet here if there's any technical questions regarding these vehicles. And then, once council approves, we'll finalize the purchase contracts for the city administrator's signature, secure the orders, work with the vendor to finalize the build-out and delivery of the vehicles per the specifications. So there's a variety of actions associated with this item tonight, so I'll let you walk through those and happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Leanne. Okay, council members, if anyone has a pressing question of Leanne, we'll, we'll do that first, and then I'll go to public comment. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Leanne, thank you for sharing that. So can you share with us, you had mentioned that, because this company is based out of Fresno, right? So we're looking at almost $1 million here, right? So, and you mentioned that they were the lowest bidder, and that there's no local companies like this that can produce that. Can you tell me what, what the other bidders, who they were, and how far apart were they?
Well, it's, it's a, it's through the Sourcewell bidding process through the state. So the state puts forth a competitive bid process, and then, then the lowest bidder is the one that Sourcewell allows us to piggyback on. So it's the, really, the, the state agency that is gathering the bids and then makes it available to all public agencies. So we're getting the most competitive price for these kinds of vehicles.
Got it. So, yeah, the competitive price, but then, again, we basically don't have a say in this. I mean, because it's going through the state, you said, right?
Well, they, they do the bid process, and they're, they're doing all the research, and then they're trying to make it a beneficial process for all public agencies to get these specialty vehicles at the lowest price possible.
Okay.
And they can get it by purchasing power. By, by having these types of competitive bids that are available through the system, the, the bidders are coming in with the more competitive pricing, because they want to get multiple contracts with agencies that are looking for these types of vehicles.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, opening public comment?
No public comment.
All right, closing public comment. Back to council. I, I don't see anyone on my board, so if someone wants to make a motion?
Some of them.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Klein, seconded by Councilmember Armandaris to approve, right?
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passed unanimously. All right, under item 8, public hearings, we have none. Under nine-
Was that approval of all the actions together?
Oh. There's, thank you.
I think the record should reflect it's approval of all the actions, including adopting the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, and thank you for pointing that out, right? Motion makers and all of us voting yes, it's meant to be everything.
Just want to be sure.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Eight is public hearings, none, nine is unfinished business, none, so we come to 10, 10.1. Adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Gilroy amending the submission to the qualified electors of the city of a certain measure relating to the public safety transactions and use tax. So Jimmy, are you giving us this report? Oh, Bryce is, okay.
All right. Freezing, Mayor, council. So this is an ministerial amendment to the resolution calling for the election and submitting the ballot measure for the public safety transactions use tax. Both the adopted resolution and the effectuating ordinance, if adopted by voters, provide a 0.25% rate, but describe it in slightly different language. The resolution has the ballot question, which is asking to enact a quarter cent tax. The ordinance says a rate of 0.25%, and then parentheses, 1/4 of 1%. The registrar of voters identified the language, asking the city wishes to have the language read exactly the same. Although the two statements mean the same thing, staff is asking council to amend the ballot question resolution to have the statements match exactly the same to address the question of the ROV. No other changes are proposed, and this amendment does not make any material changes to the nature or application of the tax measure should it pass. Staff's recommendation, therefore, is to adopt the resolution. It's complete the presentation, happy to receive any questions or comments.
Thank you, Bryce. All right, council members, do anybody have any questions? I don't see any on my board. Okay, then I will open public comment. I know we have at least one, Jim Wyatt.
Well, good evening, council members. It's always an honor and a privilege to speak with you. I'm here to speak in favor of the upcoming November 5th ballot measure dedicated to providing essential funding for public safety through a quarter cent sales tax. On June 17th of this year, this council voted overwhelmingly in support of placing this tax measure on the ballot. As the former fire chief and longtime resident of Gilroy, I believe this tax measure is a crucial and vital step towards supporting the critical mission of our fire and police departments. I say this with conviction. As I was there when the first responders responded to the Gilroy Garlic Festival shooting a mere five years ago. I was present when your fire department organized the initial emergency medical response to the pandemic with, when few people dared to. And your department became the first to initiate a mobile vaccination program for the most vulnerable patients in and during the pandemic. I was here when the fire department responded and provided fire mutual aid for more than 80 days when the entire state was experiencing massively destructive wildfires. And I was here when your highly competent firefighters incredibly went from a 30% cardiac save rate to an unprecedented 62%. However, none of these and many other significant accomplishments are possible without adequate funding. Our ability to respond to emergencies of today and in the future is in jeopardy. Our city's population continues to increase, and with it, the justified dependence on rapid and competent emergency services. In just five short years, the fire department call volume has increased from 5,500 to 7,500 calls annually. That's a 30% or 2,000 calls additionally each year. Added to this excessive call volume is the perpetual statewide paramedic shortage and a resulting South County ambulance crisis that forces our firefighters to remain on the scene 30, 40, sometimes 60 minutes waiting for the ambulance. We have reached a crossroads. Without a sustained and reliable funding for public safety, they are unable to keep up with the emergencies they are dispatched to. We need the public's help. If the members of public safety are to continue their critical mission, I am asking all voters of this fine city to support the dedicated members of public safety so that they can continue to provide excellent service now and in the future by voting for this crucial ballot measure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I see no other speakers, is that correct? Okay, closing public comment. Comes back to council.
I'm up.
Oh, Councilmember Tovar.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for those comments, and thank you, staff, for kind of, you know, working on this, because the wording, one of the concerns that a lot of folks have is in regards to is where the funds are going to be used. And I think the proposed wording answers it clearly where the funds will be used and how they'll be sort of, you know, allocated. So I appreciate the work on, on this, and I think it makes it a lot clearer to a lot of folks. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
I'll second. Okay, so we have, we have a motion to adopt the, just this very slightly changed wording here, and seconded by, motion made by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Armandaris. Go ahead, roll call vote.
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Armandaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes six to one. Okay, that brings us to 10.2, discussion on the Open Government Commission's recommendations from the November 6th, 2023 presentation regarding rules of conduct for all speakers and virtual participation. Bryce, you're going to give us this report?
Yes, Mayor. So, Mayor, council, at the November 6th, 2023 council meeting, the council received a presentation from the Open Government Commission, enable, called Enabling Hybrid Public Meetings. As part of that presentation, they included findings recommending the establishment of, one, hybrid in-person and virtual presence meetings for the city council and possibly other boards, commissions, and committees. And, second, rules of civilian decorum for members of the public to abide by when participating in a public meeting. At the conclusion of the presentation, council asked questions of the, of the commission representative and a desire to discuss, trigger direction to bring back the matter to council for potential discussion. At this time, staff has not yet analyzed the presentation. As part of that, the staff did not issue any direction for staff to spend time on the matter at that point in time. Each of the two requests can proceed without the other. Rules of decorum may be helpful regardless of any virtual participation structure. Virtual meetings benefit, do benefit significantly from the ability to reference and hold speakers accountable to a set of conduct rules. There are some policy questions for consideration by council in deliberating discussing this. First, regarding the hybrid meetings, first is, does the council desire to have members of the public participate virtually? If so, how would the council desire to address participants wishing to provide public comment who may live outside the city region, possibly even the state and the nation? Would council desire to allow virtual participants to share their screen for public comments? What about presenters to the council on the agenda? And would council desire, allow city consultants and non-staff participants to a business item on the agenda to present virtually during the meeting as well? And finally, would multiple people on one login to a virtual meeting be allowed time each or as a collective? Regarding the rules of conduct, some of the policy questions would be how are the rules to be enforced? If there is conflict amongst the council on if a rule is violated, who is the final arbiter of violations? What is the enforcement mechanism for ongoing or repeat violations? And how often should the rules of conduct be reviewed for possible amendments? Based on council's direction, staff time would be required to both update the research conducted by the Open Government Commission and research specifics regarding operations, technology, and financial implications of the direction that council desires to pursue, which are not part of that presentation. For alternatives of fiscal impact, there's none. This is a discussion item. Staff time may be spent on research based on council direction that we receive. And for recommendation next steps, it's council discussion and direction, and the staff will proceed based on any council direction received. That completes the presentation, and happy to receive any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. I am not seeing any council members on the board. Okay, Councilmember Bracco?
Andy, can we limit where they live?
That's, that's really an open question, frankly, and probably not, but it's, it may be. There are these First Amendment issues, though, once you allow remote participation. And some cities have gone in one direction, some have cut back and reduced remote participation because of that reason. So I'd like to give you a more definitive answer, but we'd have to really look very closely at seeing what kind of limitations might be possible.
Councilmember Armandaris?
I have more of a statement than a question, so I can hold off till after public speaking, if that's what you prefer.
Okay. Are there any other council with questions? Okay, I don't see you on the board, Councilmember, but go ahead. Yeah, Councilmember Tovar, okay.
Bryce, thank you for this. Obviously, you know, I've kind of thought about this quite a bit, and kind of, maybe you can kind of fill this in. I know this has been a, an issue with many cities who've kind of stayed away from this, obviously, because I think sometimes when the mayor mentions about it being a safe space, obviously, it's important, right? And I think one of the issues that I've talked to other cities about is how do you control those individuals who are going to, you know, obviously, are be problematic when they're who are going to, you know, obviously are be problematic when they're talking or they're, you know, they're attacking? And my concern about that is, obviously, you can see that from city to city, you have a lot of different elected officials that are resigning because of the fear of what's happening, right? So from your research, how many cities locally are utilizing this type of?
So just to clarify, so we, this staff has not done any research, just because we haven't looked at the direction. I did in communication about this item with the city attorney's office. It sounds like even the research that Open Government Commission did back then, some cities have backed off, made changes to their policy. So we would have to actually redress the research to see what the actual trends are currently.
Thank you. And then I'll just end with this. For me personally, I think having in-person comments, especially from our community, has more of an impact, obviously, because we're seeing face to face, we're, you know, staring at each other in the eyes. And I think for me, that's, there's more meaning behind that than, obviously, somebody who's hiding behind a screen and may not even be a resident of our city. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, council member Klein.
Yeah, I would concur with council member Tovar about being in person. And just in my experience, especially in this last year and a half, being on council and observing public meetings, observing people coming, depending on the issues we've had. I mean, tonight is a great example of people being able to share what they're, want to share with us, and they have that ability. And to me, this is the best way, when it's in-person, eye to eye, and you can see, both we can see and they can see us and our reactions. To me, that's very critical to the conversation and to keep at point what you're discussing and what you're trying to decide. So that's.
If I could, then, Mayor.
Say what?
If this isn't just for questions, then if I could go ahead.
Oh, yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you.
And then I'll go to public comment.
Yeah, I, I feel like we're coming to the table and making comments with a lot of privilege, right? Like, I don't think any of us is immunocompromised. We don't have any, you know, disabilities that keep us from being here. I know I often have to rush down the freeway to get here on time. But we are a living community, right? We're a bedroom community with commuters, with working people, family, folks with, who are working families who can't make it here. And if you remember during COVID, and I don't think people are hiding behind a screen. I think people during COVID showed us how robust our community can participate, right? Folks were, we had 20, 30 people participating in all of our council meetings or watching and making comments in a very real way and in real time. And I think that's a sign of a healthy democracy. I don't think that that's any less valuable. We all work using Zoom meetings all the time. And I don't discount folks' input because they're on the other side of a screen, right? It's, it's a very convenient way to meet and still be efficient and still be productive, right? And so I don't discount folks who, who participate that way, especially, like I said, working people who can't make it down here, seniors, the disabled, folks who are immunocompromised, who don't feel safe in an outdoor public space or sitting in an indoor public space, rather, with others. And so I would appreciate staff being able to bring back, you know, best practices from other communities, what they're doing. I'd like to see us have a hybrid model and a good, strong set of guidelines that'll keep us from, you know, having to be subjected to hate crimes or hate speech or awful things, right? I think we can, if we have something to enforce, then we can enforce it. And the technology is such that, that it's totally enforceable. So I, I support us having, having guidelines that allow us to get more people to participate in our community, and that means a hybrid, hybrid meetings. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll go to public comment.
Yeah.
Something else? Okay, yeah, you have a question.
No, thank you, council member Armandares, for those comments. Bryce, depending on where this goes, obviously, again, because obviously you want everyone to be able to participate. Has there been discussion, let's just say, again, the word privilege was thrown out there, but there might be folks out there who don't have internet, right? If we decide to go this direction, will the entire community have access to internet to be able to participate, you know, through sharing our VPN or our internet? I'm just trying to get a better sense, because again, as council member Armandares mentioned, very good comments, but it won't help if folks aren't able to use an internet, right, or don't have internet. So I don't know.
I couldn't answer the question first. Internet access for, for everyone. Sorry.
Okay, council member Marks.
I concur with council member Klein. It always means so much more to me to have you here with us and, and being able to talk to you and listen to you directly. My concerns, and I take it that we're just giving suggestions to staff on what to write. I also have a concern when things go awry and someone really starts badmouthing and swearing, you know. I want a really strict protocol if we do the hybrid meetings of what happens when this occurs. I remember those COVID meetings where, I remember distinctly one night, we were, we had two hours of public comment. And I'm really concerned about where some of these people are calling in from. And I understand that we really don't have any control over that because I truly believe that Gilroy should be in charge of Gilroy. And your opinion matters the most than someone from the Midwest or the East Coast that was happening back on that particular night. So I think there's a lot to really discuss about conduct and, you know, how this would really work. And I would even like to have it maybe on a trial basis, where if it doesn't work out well, we can always bring it back up for discussion and revise it. Just a thought.
I like that idea. Okay, so if we're all okay with me opening public comment, I'd like to go to that. And then maybe what we need to do is just break this down into pieces at a time. Okay, so I'm opening public comment, and I see Ron Kirkish on the board to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, community, city council, and Andy and Jimmy. We've, of course, back in November, we addressed this issue. And can you hear me okay? And at that time, it was noted that several cities have adopted not to have them. Even though some of them did, after the, what happened to their meetings, they said, no more. Morgan Hill was one of those, I believe. On July 27th, in the San Diego Union Tribune, there was an article about the city of San Diego saying they don't want to, they're, they're looking at not doing hybrid meetings anymore. And the reason why is because their president, Elo Rivera, says that making council, these meetings are making council and committee meetings significantly longer and making it harder for the council to get its work done on schedule. That was one of the objectives, objections. He also stressed that many other cities and public agencies have eliminated virtual public comments. Among, among those cities are Chula Vista, Oceanside, and Carlsbad. And so I think the trend is going away from these virtual meetings or hybrid meetings and instead bringing the people, if they want to come, they can come to City Hall, or they can send you emails, or they can call you personally. There are different ways to do it without having to suffer unscreamed people calling in and, and maybe perturbing the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, then that closes public comment. How would the council feel about talking about rules of conduct? And maybe starting there?
Can we start first if we want to discuss it at all?
Okay. Discuss any of this at all? You mean?
If there's not a majority that wants to move forward with these meetings, then it's pointless to talk about.
Okay. Okay, so I certainly, I just want to go on record as saying how much I appreciate what our OGO commissioners did, right, and all the work that they did putting into this, even though, like, I personally don't support the virtual comment aspect because of reasons that I have stated many, many times. I believe that we should be, our allegiance belongs to the citizens of Gilroy and not to those who frequently comment in when, when you have that virtual feature. But I do think that the rules of conduct and some of the communication that was suggested by commissioners is worthwhile. But to your point, council member Bracco, I suppose I should ask then, how many?
Can we split the two up, the rules of conduct and?
Sure, okay, maybe let's do that. Okay, so who would like?
I do have a conduct, I mean, a comment, Mayor, just regarding what you said, because I'm not sure if it's the same meeting that council member Marks was referring to when we had a couple hours of public comment. Number one, when an issue is important enough, we will get people here, we'll get people to email, we'll get people to call us, and it's our duty, right? Like, I don't plan anything after these meetings on Monday nights. This is my whole night, right? Like, I don't have to leave. I, my plan is, and my duty is to sit here and listen to folks and, and represent, right? And so regardless of how long the meeting runs, I'm, I'm committed, and I believe you are all committed, to, to being here to listen. But the meeting in question might have had to do with the bike park, right, the mountain bike park. People calling in from over, all over the country. And so it's, our decision to make Gilroy a tourist attraction, right, a destination, means that whoever decided to let the tourists know that we're deciding on a mountain bike park, and then they called in by the dozens, like, that's great, that's fantastic. That's a good thing, that's not a bad thing, to listen to people from out of town tell us how they want to come to our community and spend their money and spend the night and enjoy an attraction. And they were calling in to support that. That's exactly what we want, right? And when people call in from out of town, the Brown Act requires us to listen, and we cannot screen people from, for where they're calling from or their address or even to give us our real numbers or real name or age or anything like that. We cannot discriminate against people who are taking their time to call in. And I think the Brown Act is a good thing in that it covers that, and we need to abide by that. But again, I think when people call in, we need to respect them all for taking their time, for sharing their opinion. And if they're tourists calling in to tell us that that's a good thing and they want to support it, then, and we want to attract tourism, right, then, then that's what we do. So I, and I think we have to be even-handed in all of that. So, so my two cents regarding that.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so getting back to council member Bracco, you said to split the two. So I'm going to ask, how many on the, how should I put this?
Maybe yes, no, or trial, or trial basis. Well, you know.
Well, I don't know about trial.
I think a trial's a good idea.
Yeah, okay, well, let me start, I guess I'll start with, who, who on this council wishes to pursue virtual public comment?
Well, just the question is, who's interested in having a discussion, right? Because again, I think for me, as I mentioned, I would prefer, you know, in-person, but if cities can come back with, you know, regulations, kind of how that would all play out, that kind of opens up my mind to thinking about that, right?
We also need to think about ADA compliance, right? We need to think about.
Those are the questions I want to get answered.
Discriminating against people who are immunocompromised and who cannot make it down here physically. We need to think about being compliant for their needs.
No, we, they, people who can't make it down here can email comments, can call any of us.
But they cannot participate like other folks.
They can, yes, they can.
In real time. They cannot in real time. They have to watch a YouTube video, it's not the same.
Okay. Council member Bracco, do you want to phrase how you're thinking this would go? Because apparently I'm not phrasing it correctly.
I would, I would say to take a vote if we want to pursue these meetings or not.
Pursue a virtual public, public comment.
Does that have to be a motion then?
It's not, no, it doesn't have to be a motion. We're trying to, isn't this giving direction to staff?
It's giving direction to staff, so you're taking informal vote at the moment on what direction.
We, we heard the report, right, we heard the report from our OGO commission. This is not the first time we're discussing this, we have discussed. The question is, do you want staff time, more staff time to go into virtual public comment? That's the question. I am absolutely interested in rules of conduct, making it easier for people to read our agendas, making it easier, making our website improvements better for people. OGO commissioners pointed out a lot of things that I didn't even realize that I think are, would be way better improved. But it's just the virtual comment aspect, I mean, even the, even proclamations and things like that, we'd end up with comments like with the ceasefire thing. I mean, I got 6,000 emails on that. And so, which goes to show that people can participate that way. If that had been open to public comment, there might have been an awful lot of, of opinions. Again, I'd sit here all night listening to people from Gilroy. It's the listening to people that are not from Gilroy that shouldn't interfere with our ability to conduct the business of the citizens of Gilroy.
And we can make regulations that.
That's my point.
We can make regulations that cap the amount of time that we spend on each subject matter or each agenda item. We can make a rule that caps out our council meeting at midnight. Both the cities do that, right? That's not, it's not a.
Yes, it's just the.
A free-for-all. We could, we always have the ability to regulate so that we can conduct our business.
Just the people that.
And encourage participation.
It comes, though, at the expense maybe of some Gilroy people who then weren't able to speak because of it. That's all. It's just, it, it can go any way, right? We understand, I appreciate the intent.
The way, the way that's been presented right now kind of puts me in a bind, because again, I would like to see what some of those staff would come back with some recommendations on regulations, right?
Okay.
Because that's going to help me.
That's fine.
If it's yes or no, then I'm voting yes, because I, I want to see what options or regulations that we come up with, right?
Okay, so that's the, the question, though, is do, do, who on the, on this council would like to direct staff time to pursuing virtual, virtual participation? That's the question.
Even including a, what did Carol say?
Trial.
A trial run, right? Even if we do so as a.
Three months, you're not trial run to see how it works. After staff brings it back to us and we vote on it and.
Right, but to do that, you have to approve, having staff time go towards this more than what we've already discussed, and that's, comes at the expense of something, right? So that's what we're asking here, just for the virtual comment participation. So who, who is, I see council member Tovar is supporting it, council member Hilton is supporting it, and council member Armandares is supporting it. So that's three. So that's not enough to pursue, to direct staff, to use staff time for virtual comments. But the rest of this, do we want to address? Who, who? The rules of conduct and communication. The OGO brought forth not just rules of conduct suggestions, but also how to better, how to better reflect things on our website and on our agendas, not having to do with virtual comment, just period.
I, I think, I think that's a good idea, because I think our website is.
I, I do too.
Not very good.
Yeah.
It's really hard to navigate and find stuff on. I usually have to find, find out from Terrence where something's at. But I, I think it's a good idea to move in that direction and have staff move forward with that.
Okay, and I, we might all be unanimous on that, actually. Are we? Everybody want to pursue that? Council member Hilton, you're not saying? Okay, so council member Hilton is abstaining, are you abstaining too?
No.
Okay. You support? Okay, so six, six are supporting that we improve, that we give staff direction to come back with rules of conduct, starting with what OGO has suggested?
OGO suggestions and then, I mean, best practices from cities and, like we saw at the League of Cities, right? They had some really good suggestions, and I'd like to see those incorporated.
So does, does staff need any more specific information from us? No. Okay. Then anybody else have any comments? All right, then that brings us to item 10.3, which is to adopt a resolution approving the updated mid-cycle position control list. Harjo, you're on, you're on for this one.
That is correct. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and members of the committee. Here Joe Song, the Finance Director. I'll be presenting this item to you tonight. So a little background, our current biennial budget was adopted back in June of last year, 2023. And also as part of the budget, one of the actions is we include a position control list that gets also approved via resolution. So the current position control list was last updated or amended when council approved the Quality of Life Program on a permanent basis back in January 2024. And tonight, we're bringing forward mid-cycle updates to, to the position control list. bringing forward mid-cycle updates to, to the position control list. Um, high-level big-ticket items, we are adding four positions, and I'll call those out as I, uh, go through my presentation. Majority of the others are more of reclassification of existing titles or just cleanups that departments have identified. Uh, so with respect to Utilities Department, uh, we are recommending addition of a Utilities, uh, Operations Manager. Um, so based on the evaluation of the current Utilities Department structure and operations, uh, we don't have a manager-level position within our utilities, so it's pretty evident that we need a manager-level position to, uh, oversee both the water and wastewater utility operations. So this position is recommended to, uh, manage, plan, and direct the daily activities of the utilities, uh, including the operation, maintenance, and repairs, as well as manage, uh, some of the mandated compliance and the, uh, making sure that we are, uh, adhering to the governing rules and operational, uh, permits and such. Uh, this position will oversee the Operational Services Supervisor. The next position you see is the Operational Services Supervisor. So with, uh, our currently, in our Public Works, uh, Operations Division, we currently have three Operational Services Supervisor positions. As part of the budget, uh, recommended budget, we're splitting up the two departments and establishing the Utilities Department. One of the existing positions under the Water Section will transfer over. Uh, there is obviously a need, um, for a Operational Services Supervisor to oversee the wastewater, um, side of things. So this position will again plan, direct, um, and lead the field activities of the wastewater, uh, team that does the inspecting, cleaning, and, uh, repairs of the sanitary sewer lines. Um, the third item there is the Engineering, one reclass to a Senior Civil Engineer position. Again, uh, we have two engineering positions. Uh, given the complexity of the Utilities, uh, Capital Improvement Program, um, determinations made that one of the positions should be, uh, reclassified as a Senior Civil Engineer. Um, and then this position would carry a Professional Engineer designation and registration, and will direct, uh, manage and perform the complex, uh, engineering activities, uh, within wastewater utilities. Uh, in our Community Development Department, we are, uh, recommending addition of a Deputy Director position, uh, to help implement the council goals and priorities in accomplishing some of the departmental work plan items. Uh, and the position will also assist in overseeing and streamlining some of the development services, including code enforcement activities and implementing technology enhancements. Uh, the development activity and service demand, uh, have, uh, seen an increase in the recent years, so this position will essentially be helping the Director, um, the Community Development Director implement some of those work plan items. Uh, we have seen, uh, elevated, uh, baseline revenues, elevated increase, uh, in development activities. Uh, so this position would be partly funded, uh, by the increased, uh, user, user fee revenues that the council approved in 2022 that were recently implemented. The next item is Housing and Community Development Technician, two, uh, to be reclassed to a Housing and Community Services Coordinator. Uh, again, this is a determination made by a review of the rules and responsibilities within the division, uh, that we, uh, the, the incumbent's kind of performing higher-level, uh, activities, uh, that basically require higher level of technical analysis and coordinating activities, uh, within the division. Uh, in addition, this, uh, position will plan and coordinate the CDBG grant program, and assess, uh, any future and current HUD regulations, and then, um, implement those, as well as plan and host community outreach, educational events, and work on, uh, tenant and property management, um, issues or opportunities as they arise. Uh, the fourth, the third one there within the Community Development is the Deputy Fire Marshal position. This is within the Fire Prevention, Hazardous Materials, and Pre-Treatment Division. We currently have a Deputy Fire Marshal and three hazardous material inspector positions. Uh, the current, uh, roles and responsibilities have evolved, uh, for the Deputy Fire Marshal to those of a Fire Marshal, where, uh, the incumbent is leading, planning, and organizing all segments of the, the division, so including, uh, assignment and directing the work of those inspectors as well out in the field. Um, so this is a reclass from a Deputy Fire Marshal to a Fire Marshal. And then with, uh, within the Public Works is the fourth, uh, addition, which is a Project Manager, uh, position. It's recommended, uh, to be added to the city's, uh, Engineering slash CIP, uh, team. Uh, as we know, the city has a, uh, five-year adopted capital improvement program that totals over 200 million, uh, half of which is in the current, uh, biennial budget. So, uh, many projects are currently underway in various stages of the, uh, either planning, designing, or construction. So we're recommending that this, uh, Project Manager level position be added to help the engineering team implement the CIP program. And then, um, as I indicated earlier, there's other miscellaneous changes that were identified by the departments that, um, are, require some title updates to the positions within the position control list, and some of those examples are listed here, as well as, uh, also outlined, um, in the staff report as well. Uh, from a fiscal impact perspective, the, uh, reclassifications are, uh, pretty much net neutral as either, uh, they're going to be absorbed within the existing, uh, budget for the current fiscal year, or they'll be offset by external revenue sources. Uh, so we're not recommending, uh, any, uh, additional budget amendments to accommodate the positions. Uh, with respect to the four additions, the, the new positions that we're adding, Utilities Operations Manager, Operational Services Supervisor will be funded by the, uh, Water and Wastewater Utilities. The Operations Manager will be split 50/50. The Operations Services will be, uh, 100% by the Wastewater Fund. The Project Manager position, uh, will be, uh, allocated to various departmental capital project funds, uh, as those projects are identified that the, uh, person or the candidate will work on. Last but not least is the Deputy Director position, um, for the Community Development Department. It is housed in the General Fund, as the Community Development is housed within the General Fund as well. Um, and then we also wanted to share just, uh, overall a history of our staffing since, uh, the COVID reductions that were implemented in 2020. Uh, we have been slowly but strategically, um, increasing our, our full-time positions that are budgeted. So with the, uh, current adopted budget for fiscal '25, uh, we have 287. With council's approval tonight, uh, with the proposed additions, we would be up to 291, uh, full-time positions, which, uh, is still, uh, a little bit less than what we had back in 2007, uh, for approximately 298 positions. Uh, so the recommendation before you tonight is to adopt the resolution approving the updates to the position control list. And I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Harjo. All right, councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Tovar?
Yes, thank you. Harjo, thank you for this. So, um, and just looking at all the different, uh, adjustments from the thing, I, I, I understand that, um, adjustments are necessary at times, obviously, right? But it just seems like there's so many, right? That you're presenting here, right? And, I mean, is it because of poor planning? Did we not foresee this coming? You know, um, because again, you're looking at the number of positions, obviously, that you're, that you're, um, requesting, and this should have been something that we should have already had in place and talking through our budget, right?
Yeah. So if you, um, a couple comments. So one is, updating the position control list is a function of day-to-day activities. As, you know, budget, you adopt a budget, um, things can change relatively quickly after adoption from, you know, given fiscal conditions, um, operational conditions and such. So it's always, uh, it's, while we'd like to say it's set in stone, but it's always a moving target, right? So, um, it's good, it's, uh, that we're, um, also continuing to evaluate our position control. So we're not, um, you know, initially just saying, no, this is what we have, this is what we have to work with. What we're actually doing is anytime there is a vacancy, we're actually going to the drawing board and say, all right, what did this position do? Let's get creative here, and let's see what makes sense. So I think, um, you know, it's that, that's recognized, um, as a strategic approach to update the position.
Well, and I think, thank you for that, because I think that you kind of answered my question. And again, my comments about kind of these adjustments and, you know, foreseeing this and actually applying for it, but also again, is putting in place a comprehensive review of each department, knowing what we need. So, you know, we, this doesn't happen again, right? We know ahead of time, because I understand, you know, the way that you approached it, but do we currently have a comprehensive plan in place to, to, to identify the needs of each department? Other than coming to the board and talking about it, is there anything in place, a mechanism that we use to that? Any of our jobs, obviously, we have different mechanisms to, to help us identify what, where the needs are, right?
Right, and, and, um, I'll offer, uh, two, two additional, um, comments to that. As one is, uh, if we had enough resources, I think you would see departments have a lot of need. So we have to be strategic in the sense of what we have within the budget is how we, how are we utilizing it, right? Um, we want to be making sure the position, um, or the individual incumbent is allocated, the resources allocated to the best of their skills and abilities. Um, so that's what we do, and that, this is a normal course of action throughout the year. Uh, with respect to the additions, uh, of the Utilities Department, um, all I'll offer is, as you know, this is a new department that we're standing up. Um, and one of the first things we did is we brought on the department head.
Yeah.
Um, and for those very reasons is to make sure, conduct an assessment, we, um, you know, as part of the Budget Department, did allocate some positions, but it requires a department head to come in and really evaluate the operations. And there will be, um, you know, adjustments or recommendations that are going to be determined as part of that. So this is that comprehensive review of standing up the department. So as you see, three of the positions, um, or two of the, the, the bigger positions are, are within the utilities.
No, and thank you for that. And again, I, I understand, and I support that we do need additional staff, right? Because I'm hoping that we're going to get away from, we don't have a bandwidth, a city hall job or projects done, right?
This is part of that.
Been hearing that for eight years, right? And I think, I'm hoping this is going to take us that, in that direction. But going back to again, us foreseeing the future, what do we need, right? Because I think if we identify those early, then we can have those discussions during our budget discussions, so.
Yeah, and, and, and exactly. And we do this level of review as part of the budget, and as you'll recall, there was a comprehensive list of positions that were added as, as part of the budget process as well. So, thank you.
I've got two other council, yeah, I've got Councilmember Marks, followed by Councilmember Armendaris, and then Councilmember Klein.
Harjo, I support you. I support these positions. You know, in 2007, we, you said we had, what, 290?
Eight.
Ninety-eight. We had a way smaller population back then, and we're just now getting up to 291. And then people are constantly complaining. They're not getting their permits in time. They're not getting this in time. They're not getting that in time. We're 60, we're over 60,000 people here, you know? I would like to see us get back to, uh, the numbers that we should be at, where work can be, you know, can get done in a timely fashion, instead of, you know, everyone kind of wearing multiple hats. So thank you for your report.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yeah, I'd also like to, uh, thank you and your staff for, um, the reclassifications. Like, I know it's not easy, but I think they're necessary to, um, honor staff and the work that they're actually doing, right? And also to keep us competitive, to attract and retain staff. Um, I would, um, like to see our Parks and Rec Department get back to where it was, right, pre-COVID times. Um, and I think that'll come, hopefully, with, um, some push and guidance from us and some increased revenue. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
Oh, sorry.
Real quick, on, um, you said budget, budget money, but then also external, uh,
Revenue.
Revenue sources. What would that be?
So, uh, that, that was in, uh, with respect to the, uh, housing position that we have. It's partly, it's housed and funded in the General Fund, but we offset that by CDBG or other housing revenues that, um, that we're able to secure.
And then the other thing is, you create the positions, but it is a challenge finding the people to fill those positions, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's also what you're confronted with in creating these positions, finding the people to fill it. So it's not so easy, right?
Okay, Jimmy?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would like to point out this last slide, because I think it does illustrate that we've been very strategic on building this organization. As Ms. Marks just said, we, we actually had more than 298 before that, so we're, we're getting there. And you can see some of the big jumps in some years, and some of them are not. We are a revenue-driven organization. So when our Community Development Department starts generating revenue, and our utility starts driving revenue, we're going to react and say we need to add people because there's more work. What you don't see in this is how many General Fund positions we're adding, which is none, because we don't have the revenues to address that. That's why we're being proactive, trying to go to the ballot measure. And in response to the other question, I've already told council that be prepared as part of our strategic planning. We've got to start addressing some of those areas that we haven't invested in, which is maintenance workers, parks and landscaping, uh, some of our building stuff. So, uh, we're being very strategic, but we're going to do it when we're ready, and we don't always want to wait till the next budget cycle, because then we've missed the opportunity to provide service.
Thank you for that. All right, let me open public comment, even though I don't see any. Right, okay, so there's no public comment, so I'll close that. And that's coming back to council, and this, this is a resolution, so this requires.
Proof of approval?
All right. We've got a motion by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Marks, to approve the resolution, uh, approving the updated mid-cycle position control list. Go ahead.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Item 11 is future council-initiated items. There are none. City administrators' reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of really quick reports. One, uh, I do want to remind the public that the swimming season, uh, has a few weeks left before school starts. Sorry, kids, uh, the fun's almost over, but you can get out there until, uh, August 18th. Second, I want to let council know that the, uh, Gilroy Fire Department has deployed a Type 6 engine, three-person, out to the Chico Fire for three days. The only reason why we were able to do that is that we're getting many of our employees back, and we also expect to have three graduate from the Fire Academy this week, so we have a little glimmer of hope. And it, it's a good thing for us to be able to help the state, especially when we need the state to help us. Uh, lastly, I wanted to let council and the public know that recently the City of Gilroy, the Valley Transportation Authority, and the California High-Speed Rail Authority have kicked off the station, the Gilroy Station area visioning study. Um, our, our transit center is going to be a hub of transportation activity with high-speed rail and improvements to Caltrans and VTA services. And we also, as someone asked earlier, what's going on with Ethan Alexander, uh, the county is in the process of putting out a, a request for offers from a developer to build on that property. So we have the funding identified. It, it does take quite a while, but with all that activity going around, it's a good opportunity for Gilroians to get involved in the planning of a very important city center. And, uh, we'll have more information for you going forward, and especially in our City E newsletter. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the attorneys' reports.
No report.
Okay, um, I'm going to take us into closed session, but there are public comments, so let me know when that, okay.
Well, I'll read the agenda items first, then we'll take public comment.
Okay.
So there are three closed sessions. The first is Conference with Labor Negotiators, Collective Bargaining Unit pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 and Government, uh, Gilroy City Code 17A11.4. Collective Bargaining Units Local 2805 IAFF Fire Unit representing Gilroy firefighters. City negotiators Jimmy Forbus and Leanne McPhillips. Anticipated issues under negotiation, wages, hours, benefits, working conditions, and randoms of understanding City of Gilroy and Gilroy firefighters, Local 2805. Second closed session is Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, Gilroy City Code Section 17AA8, 17A dot 8. Properties 10th Street Bridge, Thomas Lechese Bridge, New Fire Station, the APNs are given on the agenda. Negotiators Jimmy Forbus and John M. Felice Jr. of Glenloma, under negotiation price and terms of payment. Third is Conference with Legal Counsel, anticipated litigation, which is now actual litigation as well as anticipated. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Paragraph 2 of Subdivision D and Paragraph 3 of Subdivision E of Government Code Section 54956.9 and Gilroy City Code Section 17A11.3B, based upon receipt of written communication from General Counsel of 10 South, one case as defendant. So what we should do now is take public comment, you can do it intermixed or separate, however you wish, after which I need to advise the council with respect to item three, the, the anticipated litigation, uh, as the reasons to go into closed session, then the council will have to vote on whether to go into that closed session or not.
Okay.
Okay?
So I'd like to go to public comment on anything in closed session, and I see 11?
Correct.
Okay, so that will be two minutes, uh, for each speaker. Um, do you want to go ahead and call them, or do you want me to give that a shot?
Um, I can go ahead and do it. I'll need to change the clock down to two minutes.
Okay. So I'll start, okay, you're going to go ahead and call them.
I'll call them.
Okay.
Ramondo Armendaris, followed by Anna Mendoza and Adrian Ortiz. Ramondo, if you'll come to the podium?
Is that okay?
No, this is the, yeah, that's the microphone right there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you all for, uh, hearing us tonight. I would like to speak up on behalf of, uh, 14.3. Um, I would like to speak in opposition to spending $20 million on legal counsel, uh, to oppose the proposed, uh, housing development on, between, on the neighborhood between Leesley and Las Animas. I completely support building, um, homes, especially low-income housing for, um, our community in that neighborhood. Um, I grew up in that neighborhood. There's, uh, literally hundreds of, uh, of people who live there, and families who've been there for generations. I know at GADAS, Community for Resource Advocative Services, where I am the Executive Director, we get folks coming in every day, blue-collar folks, working-class families who are looking for, um, assistance, rental assistance, deposit assistance, because the cost of housing in Gilroy has skyrocketed, and they can no longer afford, uh, to pay, um, to live here. So we think that that is So we think that that is a type of housing project and development that we want to support. We want to support anything that keeps working-class folks here in Gilroy who are from Gilroy here and that don't have to, we want to support any housing that makes it easier for them so they don't have to struggle anymore to stay living here in our community. It takes all kinds of folks. We like having a diverse community. We like having a community that has working-class people, blue-collar folks, and especially those who work in, you know, agriculture, those who work in supportive positions like construction and the trades. We want all those folks to be able to stay living here in Gilroy. So we are in support of the housing development on Las Animas and in the neighborhood between Leesley and Las Animas. And we are opposed to spending any type of, you know, city funds, $20 million on legal counsel to oppose building that housing development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anna Mendoza, to be followed by Adrian Ortiz and Brian Garcia.
Hi, councilmembers. My name is Anna Mendoza, and I'm here as a community member. First, I want to say, we requested three times to get this paper. We only had about seven agendas, and not everybody had the chance to actually scan it on their phone so they can see it. So that was not acceptable. I am actually talking also on Las Animas construction. I am for it. I, like I told you earlier when I came over here, you need to come and see these families so you can understand. We recently did a news, a media, a report with the news stating a family, they had about nine people living in there, in one apartment, two-bedroom, all of them working in the fields. The place, it's tore down. And I will ask you, would you like to have your family, your kids, living in a situation like that? The rents are so high, we need affordable housing, and we need somebody to take leadership of our city. You guys can do it. You guys can make it happen. Leave a legacy behind. What if you don't get elected next year? Right? Leave something behind for those, for our future generations. Please vote yes. Okay?
Our next speaker is Adrian Ortiz, to be followed by Brian Garcia, and then Reina Denise.
Good afternoon, Mayor Blankley and councilmembers. My name is Adrian Ortiz. I'm a 17-year-old high school student who is growing up in the area where this development is being considered. It hurts me to see that you won't even consider making our environment better if it means allowing our, for housing for people like me and my family. You are perfectly willing to make exceptions for your developer friends with higher advantages to change your so-called general plan annexed properties so they can build modern houses. But when it comes to following the law and allowing development that will benefit families like mine, I prefer to fight back instead of putting the city at risk of paying millions of dollars, just to make sure our neighborhood doesn't have well-paved streets, sidewalks, street lighting, parks, and open space for recreation. What does that say about you? You want taxes so we can, so we can pay our services for the rest of Gilroy? But what do we get? Just a bunch of empty lots, are you guys just trying to say, for commercial development? As if, that we aren't even there in your eyes? So I just want to tell you guys, like, a quote that I always inspired on is, life doesn't give us purpose, but we give purpose to life. So please use your purpose to help the families of the Las Animas Avenue and help us thrive in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Garcia, followed by Reina Denise and Augustine Armendaras.
Good evening, Mayor Blankley and members of the City Council. My name is Brian, and I want to know why the city wants to waste $20 million to stop a project that involves building affordable houses for low-income families. They work really hard and provide for themselves and the families and yet struggle with paying rent, having to work, having to worry about having a ceiling over their head. Imagine how these homes can help improve families' lives, and especially children of these families. They are the future of the generations, too. They can be living right now with bad living conditions. I myself am a part of this low-income family and live in a trailer because the rent in my old neighborhood, Rogers Lane, was getting, rent was getting too high for support living conditions. So now I sleep on the floor every day instead of a bed. So I know that an opportunity like this comes up to families to live comfortably in the, if an opportunity to live comfortably in the area, they will not pass. It's time to start caring for the low-income families instead of throwing the opportunity away from them. But 20 million should not be wasted and instead be used for the community on other such things like, but better roads or better sidewalks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Reina Denise, followed by Augustine Armendaras, and then Maria Aguilar.
Yeah, let me change it then. Let me try and change it. Yeah. Go ahead. Buenas...
Can I fix the timer? Yeah, you need to reset the timer. Thank you.
Buenas noches, alcaldeza y miembros del Consilio. Mi nombre es Reina, residente de aquí de Gilroy, y vivo cerca de las propiedades en Las Animas Avenue, donde se está considerando para construir más viviendas. La comunidad latina nos enteramos por medio del periódico y vecinos, y nos tomamos a la tarea de salir a la calle, a reunir firmas, a escuchar a nuestra comunidad. Y por medio de ese trabajo reunimos 320 firmas, que aquí traemos. Aquí también le dejamos una copia. Cada una de ellas tiene una historia, una inconformidad cada familia, donde demandan una vivienda justa, un apartamento de bajos ingresos, qué es lo que necesitamos. No comprendo por qué no les gustaría las mejoras que se producerían con esta construcción en esta zona. Necesitamos estas viviendas de bajos ingresos. Muchos de nosotros vivimos en casas donde están dos a tres generaciones. Es fuerte, es, esa, se siente uno mal escuchar a esas familias. Si ustedes hayan estado presentes, escuchar a cada una de esas familias de que te dicen, viven tres o cuatro personas en un cuarto. Cuando son madres, cuando son madres solteras, es más complicado. Eso es lo que nosotros nos encontramos en la comunidad. Porque, y algunas, algunas corren, no corren con tanta suerte que no tienen un cuarto. Algunas viven en carros con sus hijos. Es triste ver a estudiantes, a niños que están viviendo en carros, y no encontrar un lugar donde, donde les puedan dar un espacio para vivir, para bañarse, para comer, y para poderlos llevar a la escuela.
Okay, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Gracias. Solamente pedimos...
Thank you.
Viviendas de bajos ingresos.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes.
I have two others that I know that are Spanish speakers. I'd like to call them out of order right now.
Please, sure.
Yasmin Saron and Maria Rodriguez. Yasmin?
I speak English.
Oh, I was told...
I speak Spanish.
Okay, Maria.
Two minutes, Beth.
Buenas noches, hola, alcaldeza y miembros del Ayuntamiento. Mi nombre es Maria Rodriguez y vivo en Gilroy. Quiero hablar de la vecindad de las calles Murray y Las Animas. Sí es una vecindad, no una zona comercial que ustedes decidieron dejar caer sobre nosotros sin nuestro aporte ni consentimiento. Estoy furiosa porque ustedes negarían más viviendas para nuestra comunidad. Viviendas que estarían disponibles para la gente trabajadora de esta ciudad. Necesitamos estas viviendas. Muchos de nosotros vivimos en casas en las que viven dos o tres familias, porque el costo de la vivienda es demasiado alta. Este desarrollo también traería parques a la zona donde nuestros niños podrían jugar seguras, seguros en lugar de andar en patineta en un estacionamiento inseguro y vacío, como lo hacen hasta el día de hoy. Necesitamos las viviendas y necesitamos los parques. Necesitamos que se complete la calle con aceras y farolas, algo que ustedes nunca pensaron en proporcionar a nuestra parte de Gilroy. Aquí hay una oportunidad que de traer todo eso a nuestra vecindad, y ustedes no lo quieren? Bueno, ustedes no viven ahí. Nosotros sí vivimos ahí. Tenemos esa necesidad. Necesitamos que escuchen nuestras peticiones, por favor. Dejen de luchar contra esta oportunidad tan necesaria para nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Thank you. Okay, Beth, the next...
Augustine Armendaras?
Okay, Beth, the time needs to be two minutes. It's set at three.
Yes, I will correct it.
Okay.
Can you hear me by this one? Okay. My name is Agustina Armendaras. Most of you know me as Sally, and I owe that to Gilroy Schools when they changed my name because they thought I was, you know, was too Mexican. But either way, I have lived, I live almost directly in Portland where this project is coming up. It is so important that this city council allow it. And there are several reasons. I understand that 30, 20 to 30% of the homes that are going to be built there are going to be low-income. The developer is using the word low-income, not affordable income like most developers. Affordable, when they use affordable, they're talking, you know, you can work up in Silicon Valley and be able to afford a house in Gilroy. But if you're low-income and work at either Taco Bell or Jack in the Box, there's no way that you're going to afford a house. And this developer is proposing to us, because I spoke to him, about low-income, and that's what we need. This city council needs to grow low-income to Gilroy. The developer is also proposing two parks and a swimming pool open to the public. The Gilroy City Council has promised people that live in the north side of Leesley a park for more than 30 years. Every single city council, mayor, whatever, that's been here for 30 years has promised that park, and it has never materialized, because they don't care what happens to the people that live on that side of town. Further, the city is allowing a fair market rate townhouses on Tatum between Kern and Ren. Those are affordable housing to anybody that doesn't work in low-income jobs. Where the city, why is the city, why is the city protecting the families here? They're not, because there's no, you can look at the clock all you want, but the fact is...
I know, I was hoping you would.
I gave, I gave her some pictures that I wanted all of you to see.
Okay, thank you, though, Sally. Your time, the time is up.
I'm putting you on notice that if anybody gets hurt there, I will talk to whoever the injured person is when they see the city of Gilroy and provide her with a lack of...
We have Maria Aguilar, followed by Eli Heisman.
Right.
She broke the mic.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of this city. You know, I always felt that our city council does not represent everybody in our city. And looking at the lawsuit that was just filed on Friday, it's pretty clear to me that it's not. So you have a builder's remedy permit that should be acknowledged, should be accepted, and instead you're fidgeting. And over here, there's a potential for a lawsuit, and who's going to be burdened with that money? It's going to be us residents, just like Glen Loma. The mishaps there, there's no money from those for a firehouse, no potential. So I, I hope that if you are involved in any of this, that you rescues yourself from voting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Eli Heisman, to be followed by Yasmin Saron.
Good evening. I'm here again on behalf of Ten South and Gandolphi Investments. I'm here again, unfortunately, because this council continues to flout its legal obligations. Since the last meeting on May 20th, you've received clear, unambiguous guidance from HCD, the state agency in charge of enforcing the housing law. According to HCD, the project is protected by builder's remedy law, and neither Gilroy's general plan or its zoning ordinance apply to this project. HCD reviewed the advice Mr. Schultz provided you at the May 20 hearing, how he believed the builder's remedy law should be interpreted, and HCD rejected it. HCD clarified that Mr. Schultz is wrong. That is not how the builder's remedy works. Gandolphi has now also filed suit in Santa Clara Superior Court, petition of writ of mandate and a complaint against the city to enforce Gilroy's compliance with the law. So what's going on here? Why is Gilroy fighting this project and refusing to follow the law? We set out to find the answer. We spoke with our neighbors in the Las Animas Murray Avenue neighborhood. What we found out is that the cities, citizens of Gilroy who live in the area love the project and desperately want the improvements it will bring to their neighborhood. You just heard from several of them now. Hundreds of neighbors have enthusiastically signed on to a petition urging you to follow the law and approve this project. We also spoke to some of you, and what we heard shocks us. Some of you have made it clear that you will never vote to approve this project. You like the project, it's a, quote, "beautiful" project, but you will never vote to approve it. And apparently, it doesn't matter to you whether the law requires you to approve it or not. Why? Why are you so opposed to this project? What you told us is that you are fighting against the builder's remedy law because it undermines the general plan, and that is unacceptable to you.
I'm sorry, your two minutes are up. Thank you.
If I may just take another 30 seconds to finish, I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant.
No, everybody, everybody gets the same amount of time. This is a closed-session item. It's not on the agenda for discussion. It's for public comment, is what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Mayor, I think we made...
Thank you. So the next speaker?
Yasmin. Yasmin Saron. Marty Estrada. We've made exceptions for developers and applicants to speak an additional time before, even, even when they weren't on the agenda, right, as such as this, or I think, I think they deserve additional 30 seconds.
Okay, next speaker.
Yasmin Saron, followed by Marty Estrada, and our final speaker will be Ron Kirkish.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yasmin, and I have lived here my entire life. I am a Gavlin student, and I also currently work at Power School, where I am constantly encountering families like myself who face the problem of high-cost rent, and I am here today to advocate for Project Las Animas. It surprises me that you won't even consider this project that is nothing more than beneficial to the community. You're perfectly willing to make exceptions for your rich developer friends so they can build fancy houses, but when it comes to the following, to following the law and allowing a development that will benefit working-class families like mine, you prefer fighting instead, risking paying millions of dollars of lawsuit just because we don't need housing.
I'm sorry.
If that were to happen, you want us to pay more taxes so we can pay for the services Gilroy needs, which is something you should take care of. Let me tell you that we do need the low-income housing that this project will provide. Now, I will tell you why it is beneficial. According to Silicon Valley at Home, there has been a 16% increase of homeless people from 2019 to 2022. The reason being, according to Gilroy Dispatch, is financial problems such as job loss and especially high rent. Las Animas Project will provide many low-income apartments, which will help avoid some people from falling victim of homelessness, something which you can't do. Similarly, there are many people like myself renting a single room because the rent is too high. I also come across many people that I work with that have three generations living in a single apartment. For you, community is the rich, but community is everyone, including the working class and low-income families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Beth, the next speaker.
Marty Estrada, to be followed by Ron Kirkish.
Okay.
Thank you, City Council. It's not uncommon for local government to face legal action over housing development, especially when they're accused of not complying with state housing rights, housing laws and regulations. You know, 4.3 says, anticipate...
Beth, the next speaker.
Marty Estrada, to be followed by Ron Kirkish.
Okay.
Thank you. City Council, it's not uncommon for local government to face legal action over housing development, especially when they're accused of not complying with state housing rights, housing laws, and regulations. You know, 4.3 says, "Anticipate litigation." Do you really want to go through that process? I can tell you stories of cities that have gone through this and lost in court. Gilroy's going to be another one. You cannot violate housing right laws, and if this gentleman says, CDC says that you guys are wrong, then they're apparently going by the law. So I would encourage you all to revisit this issue. There's another group, by the way, that's looking into this right now that's going to probably file a brief against the city as well. We don't need to go there. You're spending too much money as it is. Why not work together, allow the housing to be built for the benefit of your constituents here in Gilroy? Low-income family housing is very much needed. I don't know why you're opposed to this. Think about what you're doing because it's going to cost you a lot of money, and you're going to lose a lot of time, and then you're going to lose again when you have to pay back your attorney fees. This happened in San Jose, there was a different issue, Indemn Domain, right there in Storine King, the city took away the property, and guess what? They got sued triple the amount, and they had to pay all the fees back. Gilroy, you're going to get sued in a big way. I would think about you guys thinking about, let's have a pause, let's look at what's going on, let's look about the community, think about the community, and let's allow the building of this housing project to go forward. There's not enough housing in Gilroy, we all know that. Affordable housing is lacking here in Gilroy. Let's take a pause in a time, think about it. City Attorney, think about what's going on and what's coming down the road. It's not going to be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our final speaker is Ron Kirkish.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, City Council, I have the highest trust in our city attorney, Andy Faber. He's served our city well over many, many years as a Berliner Cohen, and we should continue to follow his advice. If he says settle, then we settle. If not, I believe we should follow his advice. The issue is builder's remedy. That's exactly the issue. We aren't against building affordable homes. No, that's what we want, but we want to do it the right way. The developer insists on using builder's remedy. Why? Why doesn't he explain to us why he wants to use builder's remedy instead of going through our normal process of codes and regulations? Why is he against that? That's what I would like to know, and that's what he should do. I continue to say, let's follow the advice of our city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay? Thank you. So that concludes public comment? Okay, so, okay, so public comment is closed. Ask a question of...
Could I ask the city attorney a question, a clarification on a comment that was made?
On a closed-session item?
Well, you can ask me a question. We're not really discussing this in open session, but what is the question? Okay, I just want clarification because my understanding, if we don't go through with this and we get sued, we're looking at only fees of $25 million because $50,000 per unit for 500 units on top of attorney fees, so it could be possibly more than $25 million, correct? Am I correct in saying... I think any discussion of litigation risk is a discussion we should have in closed session. In fact, let me give you, if I...
Yes, please.
The formal advice is, I recommend we go into closed session on item 14.3 because it would unalterably, it would unavoidably and likely prejudice the legal position of the city to discuss these matters in open session. So actually, now you need to take a vote on whether to go into closed session on litigation item 14.3.
Okay. Are we all voting to go into closed session? Yes, we are.
The vote is unanimous, so we should now, we're now ready to go into closed session. First thing we do in closed session is take a vote on whether to stay in closed session for the other two items.
Okay.
Okay?
Andy, sorry, quick question. Do we, once we're done with closed session, do we come back out and report?
We will give, if there is reportable action, we will give a report. We will give a report on the vote to stay in closed session, which is reportable. If there's other reportable action taken, we will give a public report.
Okay. Okay, so it is, that clock is not right. It's eight...
16.
16, yeah. So we need to take, what, a five-minute break?
Correct.
All right, how about we just, is it okay to come back at 8:25 or 8:20?
8:20.
Okay. Come back at 8:20, everybody, and we'll start it. Thank you. Make sure your mics are off.